Good morning. I'm excited to be here with you today to update you on activities and progress on the one day association board conference. And then to my guests, uh, to my guests as Tom referred just as we know you are too shocked to deal with anything. At senior dinner on Thursday evening, we told the girls that the relationship with Westover wasn't ending, it was simply changing. All trouble as Westover graduates, alum or martial world is as important as our role as students. As an alumni, we approve of Westover's success and its mission. We have a responsibility to Westover today and to future generations of women to be living, reading...
Of what is possible when a woman is given the opportunity to have access to a superior education. In Nicholas Kristof's Sunday New York Times article in The Nigerian Terrorists, he wrote, "Why are fanatics so terrified of girls' education? Because there's no force more powerful to transform a society. The greatest threat to extremism isn't drones firing missiles, but girls reading books." As you reconnect with your classmates this weekend, keep in mind that we're each an important part of this larger network of women, actively changing the world for the better through our experiences within these walls. As we can all attest to, Westover faculty and staff are integral to this experience. So at this point, I'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge our retiring and departing faculty, who are all moving on to exciting new adventures. Laura Volovski, 25 years at Westover as an English teacher, director of alumni relations, and most recently as our director of admissions, and her husband Steve, who has been the director of IT here as well. Barbara... Barbara Jennings, 22 years as a Westover dorm parent. Lisa Marie Bonacor, 20 years as a history teacher. Patty Buchanan, dance teacher for the past 12 years. Laura, Barbara, Lisa Marie, and Patty, can you please stand? Let's please give them a round of applause. We wish you all the best. Please also join me in thanking Nancy Palayas and the entire Alumni Development Office for coordinating these alumni reunion weekends. It's so much work, so much time and patience. So thank you so much Nancy and the office. And this year you have to put up with me for a while. I'll be reading all of the reports, just for the sake of brevity. So we're gonna go right into the secretaries' reports. And the minutes of last year's town meeting are posted in Red Hall and right outside of this meeting. Additional copies, if you'd like to see them, are available at the entrance to the theater. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any objections? This motion is passed, the minutes are approved. And the treasurer's report. And we started the year with an opening balance of $10,879.62. We have a current balance of $7,063.13. Funds were used for networking events, senior gifts, freshman tea, and donations were made to various in memoriam funds as well. And the annual fund report. As of today, I'm excited to announce we've raised $1,263,484 in gifts and pledges towards our goal of $1,575,000. These are amazing results, but there's still a lot of work to be done. You're the reason that Westover proudly boasts one of the highest alumni participation rates in annual fund giving compared to our peer schools. This year, we are rebounding after two years of slipping participation rates, so thank you very much. Currently, we have a 33% alumni participation rate towards our goal of 41%. But every gift, no matter the size, helps our participation rate. Your annual fund gift is your vote of confidence in Westover. It's your participation in the Inspiring Women campaign, and it is your support of today's Westover girls. And now I'm gonna turn this over to the Chair of the Governance Committee, Abby Brown, class of 61, to present the slate of governors and new slate of officers for the Board of Governors.
Thank you, Ann. Good morning, everyone. I have a great pleasure and honor to present to you two slates for your vote of acceptance. First is the slate for the nomination for membership of the Board of Governors for the coming year, 2014 to 2015. This slate has been unanimously approved and recommended by the full Board for the Alumni Association's vote of acceptance, and it's a really good group. To serve an initial three-year term through May 2017, Lucy Finn, uh, class of '94 from New York, New York. Danielle Stewart-Knop, uh, class of 2003 from Stonemont. And Danielle is here. Danielle?
Stand.
Victoria Viera, uh, class of 2000 from Washington DC, and Patricia Verden Mitchell, class of '70 from Manchester, Mass. Do I have a motion to accept the slate as presented? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There being no nominations from the floor, the slate of proposed new governors is approved as presented. Congratulations to all. The proposed slate for officers of the Board of Governors, very important group of people. President Anne Clark Triftis, class of '96 from Baltimore, Maryland. Vice President Lee Val Steel, class of '87 from Portland, Maine. Secretary Lizzie Coffin, class of '92 from Brooklyn, New York. And Treasurer Izuku I. Imaglia... Yeah, Imaglia. Somebody say it better than me. Do I have a motion to accept this slate as presented? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? There being no nominations from the floor, the 2014 slate of proposed officers of the Board of Governors is approved as presented. Thank you all. Lastly, I would like to thank our retiring governors for their years of service to Westover. Please stand and be acknowledged as I read your name. Elizabeth Darling White? Okay, not here. Joni Gerster? And Amma Osi? No. I wanna thank these governors so much. They have been, you have been a wonderful, loyal, committed member of the Westover community and have worked very hard. Thank you all very much.
Our town hall meeting is now officially adjourned, and I'm pleased to introduce our esteemed head of school, Ann Paulina.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for bringing the sunshine with you. I have to say it's fitting because I have never, I don't think there's ever been a sunnier time at Westover. I've been a part of Westover for more years than I'm willing to admit, unless you are willing to believe that I came when I was six. But this moment in our history is one of the most exciting that I can remember, and I'd like to tell you why. First of all, at a time when the demographics tell us that the number of 14-year-olds is the lowest it has been in the last decade, we have had one of the most successful admissions seasons ever. We are gonna welcome between 48 and 50 new ninth graders next year to our school. That's a stunning return on our offers. And if this year's graduating class is any indication, these girls will go on to some of the finest colleges in the country like Cornell, Georgetown, Johns Hopkins, Middlebury, Swarthmore, UPenn, Wellesley, and Yale, to name only a few of the places our seniors got into this year. Second, we are thought leaders in academic programming for girls. In the last five years, there's been a great deal of proliferation of programs in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. You hear about it frequently as programs get started at other schools. Those schools are just catching up to us. Westover's Women in Science and Engineering program, our WISE program, has been in place for more than 20 years, and it produces remarkable results. In fact, I'm gonna talk about that in a little bit. In addition to WISE, our girls, you know, we were foundational in founding the online school for girls and in helping to establish a multi-school program in business and investing called Invest in Girls. It sets us apart as educators of young women. Third, we're in the process of building a new strategic plan and a campus master plan for our school. We're basing this on the following vision. Westover will be the leader in educating girls and the school of choice for young women who prize academic excellence. We will achieve this distinction by cultivating in students a lifelong love of learning, teaching them the importance of rigorous inquiry, and giving them a sense of responsibility to the world. Our facilities enable our community of faculty and students to come together in intellectual, artistic, and athletic exploration for the betterment of all. That's the vision we're going forward with. And I think it sets us up for very, very exciting next few years. Fourth, uh, fourth reason why we are so, at such a wonderful place right now. Our current faculty is a fascinating mix of long-serving veterans, mid-career teachers who've been at the school for 10 or 15 years, and young and upcoming educators. The interchanges that, and the synergies amongst these groups is truly amazing. It creates an electricity that I believe is palpable. And nothing is more important to a school's success than the excellence of its teachers. Five, our volunteer leadership is stronger than ever. If you've been noticing those governors who've been walking around this weekend, um, setting up their, you know, their, uh, this, this meeting and all of the events around it will give you some idea. In addition, we have a Board of Trustees seasoned and skilled in governance and a Parents Council operating at a very, very professional level. And, and lastly, although I probably, if you tapped on my door at 2:00 in the morning, would give you six different reasons why this is such a great time for Westover. But if it's impressive that we filled the school in this demographic dip, it should be even more noteworthy that having, you know, launched our, publicly launched our $45 million centennial campaign in 2009, right in the teeth of the Great Recession, we are within inches of completing that campaign. And we're in a very, very exciting way. I'll say a little bit more about that in a moment as well. I wanna say that it's not the, that it's not only the signs of good health that we hope that you'll be celebrating with us today. If there's one message I want you to take away from us this weekend, it's this. Westover makes a difference. And I'm gonna give you two quick examples of that, and it's gonna start with this one. You may have been reading or heard about the research done by Barbara Erickson, who's the Director of Computing and Outreach and a Senior Research Assistant at Georgia Tech. It drew national attention, her research drew national attention, because she looked at the number of girls taking the Advanced Placement Computer Science exam. And what she noticed is that in this particular exam, the number of girls in blue there is dramatically different than the number of boys taking the exam in green. And it hasn't changed much since 1999. In some states, no girls take the Advanced Placement Computer Science exam at all. So with that as a backdrop, I want you to listen to these numbers. In the state of Connecticut, last year, 18% of the girls who passed the Computer Science exam, that means getting at least a 3 out of a scale of 1 to 5, came from Westover's WISE program. I, I should say that the average for the girls in the state of Connecticut was 3.1. Westover's average was 4.4 out of 5. And, and if you talk about making a difference, I want you to see this slide. So if you look at, at that whole slice of pie, all of the girls in the state of Connecticut are represented in that slice of pie, and that big blue chunk are Westover students. And they're the ones who scored the highest on the AP Computer Science exam in the state. So, um, this isn't new. We typically produce 20 to 25% of the top scores in the state of Connecticut out of this program. And the, and the real kicker, and I have to end with this, is that the kids who take this test for us are mostly sophomores. They're mostly 10th graders, so it's fantastic. I, I wanna make clear to you that, that the difference that we make is not in, in testing and scores alone. If you were here five years ago, you probably remember a story that I told of a young woman named Sonia Sala, a young woman from Afghanistan who found Westover and, and applied to us describing poignantly her efforts to get an education in that war-torn country. We were devastated, and so were our students, because after admitting her, she was prevented from coming to Westover because of threats made against her family. Our students were absolutely outraged at that because they had known the story too, and they couldn't believe that this young woman was gonna be denied an education. And so in the spirit of cogitare agere essay, they took their thought into action. They not only raised money and provided her with a Kindle to do work at home, but in the process of doing that, they connected themselves to a school named SOLA, School of Leadership Afghanistan, and they sent Kindles to that entire school. They went further. They were worried that the young women carrying those Kindles might be accosted if this educational device was too obvious, so they made these Kindle covers in needle arts class so that they could walk the streets with Kindles that weren't terribly obvious. So though, though we were not able to educate Sonia, our connection to SOLA allowed us to bring to Westover an amazing young woman, Farah Nas Afak. And I would like you to hear how Westover's made a difference to her. So Farah, come on up.
Good morning. I feel so honored to be here. Every day is God's great gift that we cannot, we can never hold on to because it will pass on. At times, you might experience different things, learn new things, or face stressful challenges which will make you think, "I wish this were not my life." However, most of the time, you experience bitter and happier things which make you wish to live longer, maybe even forever. For all of us, I think childhood is the most sweet and memorable period of time. Children start seeing the beauty of life. Their understanding about different things, environment, and way of living will increase, particularly if they have more opportunities. You might spend your childhood the best way your parents and situation could provide you because you had great opportunities. It made your parents happy seeing you smiling and having fun, playing with a new toy, or even an old toy, or even more than one toy. Or maybe you spend most of your childhood in kindergarten and elementary school playing with other kids. Now imagine going back to that sweet moment, having no toy, or having only one toy, and you ask your dad to hang it on the wall because you're afraid you will lose it. How would that feel? You might feel a bit sad, but it might not affect you much.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for bringing the sunshine with you. I have to say it's fitting because I have never, I don't think there's ever been a sunnier time at Westover. I've been a part of Westover for more years than I'm willing to admit unless you are willing to believe that I came when I was six. But this moment in our history is one of the most exciting that I can remember, and I'd like to tell you why. First of all, at a time when the demographics tell us that the number of 14-year-olds is the lowest it has been in the last decade, we have had one of the most successful admissions seasons ever. We are going to welcome between 48 and 50 new ninth graders next year to our school. That's a stunning return on our offers. And if this year's graduating class is any indication, these girls will go on to some of the finest colleges in the country like Cornell, Georgetown, Johns Hopkins, Middlebury, Swarthmore, UPenn, Wellesley, and Yale, to name only a few of the places our seniors got into this year. Second, we are thought leaders in academic programming for girls. In the last five years, there's been a great deal of proliferation of programs in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. You hear about it frequently as programs get started at other schools. Those schools are just catching up to us. Westover's Women in Science and Engineering Program, our WISE program, has been in place for more than 20 years, and it produces remarkable results. In fact, I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. In addition to WISE, our girls, we were foundational in founding the online school for girls and in helping to establish a multi-school program in business and investing called Invest in Girls. It sets us apart as educators of young women. Third, we're in the process of building a new strategic plan and a campus master plan for our school. We're basing this on the following vision: Westover will be the leader in educating girls and the school of choice for young women who prize academic excellence. We will achieve this distinction by cultivating in students a lifelong love of learning, teaching them the importance of rigorous inquiry, and giving them a sense of responsibility to the world. Our facilities enable our community of faculty and students to come together in intellectual, artistic, and athletic exploration for the betterment of all. That's the vision we're going forward with, and I think it sets us up for very, very exciting next few years. Fourth, fourth reason why we are so at such a wonderful place right now. Our current faculty is a fascinating mix of long-serving veterans, mid-career teachers who've been at the school for 10 or 15 years, and young and upcoming educators. The interchanges that and the synergies amongst these groups is truly amazing. It creates an electricity that I believe is palpable, and nothing is more important to a school's success than the excellence of its teachers. Five, our volunteer leadership is stronger than ever. If you've been noticing those governors who've been walking around this weekend setting up their, you know, their, this meeting and all of the events around it will give you some idea. In addition, we have a board of trustees seasoned and skilled in governance and a parents' council operating at a very, very professional level. And lastly, although I probably, if you tapped on my door at 2 o'clock in the morning would give you six different reasons why this is such a great time for Westover, but if it's impressive that we filled the school in this demographic dip, it should be even more noteworthy that having, you know, launched our, publicly launched our $45 million centennial campaign in 2009, right in the teeth of the Great Recession, we are within inches of completing that campaign and in a very, very exciting way. I'll say a little bit more about that in a moment as well. I want to say that it's not the, it's not only the signs of good health that we hope that you'll be celebrating with us today. If there's one message I want you to take away from us this weekend, it's this: Westover makes a difference. And I'm going to give you two quick examples of that, and it's going to start with this one. You may have been reading or heard about the research done by Barbara Erickson, who is the Director of Computing and Outreach and a senior research assistant at Georgia Tech. It drew national attention, her research drew national attention, because she looked at the number of girls taking the Advanced Placement Computer Science exam, and what she noticed is that in this particular exam, the number of girls in blue there is dramatically different than the number of boys taking the exam in green, and it hasn't changed much since 1999. In some states, no girls take the Advanced Placement Computer Science exam at all. So with that as a backdrop, I want you to listen to these numbers. In the state of Connecticut, last year, 18% of the girls who passed the computer science exam, that means getting at least a three out of a scale of one to five, came from Westover's WISE program. I should say that the average for the girls in the state of Connecticut was 3.1; Westover's average was 4.4 out of 5. And if you talk about making a difference, I want you to see this slide. So if you look at that whole slice of pie, all of the girls in the state of Connecticut are represented in that slice of pie, and that big blue chunk are Westover students, and they're the ones who scored the highest on the AP Computer Science exam in the state. So this isn't new. We typically produce 20 to 25% of the top scores in the state of Connecticut out of this program. And the real kicker, and I have to end with this, is that the kids who take this test for us are mostly sophomores. They're mostly 10th graders, so it's fantastic. I want to make clear to you that the difference that we make is not in testing and scores alone. If you were here five years ago, you probably remember a story that I told of a young woman named Sonia Sala, a young woman from Afghanistan who found Westover and applied to us describing poignantly her efforts to get an education in that war-torn country. We were devastated, and so were our students, because after admitting her, she was prevented from coming to Westover because of threats made against her family. Our students were absolutely outraged at that because they had known the story too, and they couldn't believe that this young woman was going to be denied an education. And so in the spirit of cogitare agere essay, they took their thought into action. They not only raised money and provided her with a Kindle to do work at home, but in the process of doing that, they connected themselves to a school named SOLA, School of Leadership Afghanistan, and they sent Kindles to that entire school. They went further. They were worried that the young women carrying those Kindles might be accosted if this educational device was too obvious, so they made these Kindle covers in needle arts class so that they could walk the streets with Kindles that weren't terribly obvious. So though we were not able to educate Sonia, our connection to SOLA allowed us to bring to Westover an amazing young woman, Farah Nas Aafak, and I would like you to hear how Westover's made a difference to her. So Farah, come on up.
I feel so honored to be here. Every day is God's great gift that we cannot, we can never hold on to because it will pass on. At times, you might experience different things, learn new things, or face stressful challenges which will make you think, "I wish this were not my life." However, most of the time, you experience bitter and happier things which make you wish to live longer, maybe even forever. For all of us, I think childhood is the most sweet and memorable period of time. Children start seeing the beauty of life, their understanding about different things, environment, and way of living will increase, particularly if they have more opportunities. You might spend your childhood the best way your parents and situation could provide you because you had great opportunities. It made your parents happy seeing you smiling and having fun, playing with a new toy or even an old toy, or even more than one toy. Or maybe you spend most of your childhood in kindergarten and elementary school playing with other kids. Now imagine going back to that sweet moment, having no toy or having only one toy, and you ask your dad to hang it on the wall because you're afraid you will lose it. How would that feel? You might feel a bit sad, but it might not affect you much because you're just imagining it, you really didn't experience it. But for me, that was my childhood. Staring at only one beautiful doll, which I called Arusak, it means bride in Persian. She was so beautiful, and she had golden curly hair and blue eyes. She had pink-colored puffy dress, that's why I called her Bride, Arusak. I did not have any storybook, and I've never, ever been to kindergarten, so I spent most of my time chatting with Arusak. I had a small, red-colored, spotty pillow. I laid down, putting my head on my pillow on the space where I could see Arusak best, and I spent my whole time just staring at Arusak and talking to her, and told myself stories about Arusak and showing her funny faces. But she never looked at me. She always looked straight to the other wall, and she never laughed at my funny faces. The night my family and I had to flee from Iran to Pakistan, we had to leave in the middle of the night. I knew there would be something good where we were going if we could get there because we were leaving so my siblings and I could get an education. But we could only bring the most important things carrying on our backs. Therefore, Arusak had to be left behind, which was the hardest moment of my childhood. When my dad took Arusak down from the wall, her eyes closed. There was a little bit of dust on top of the box. I cleaned it, and still Arusak looked shiny and lovely. I left her on the floor like she was sleeping because I didn't want her to know that I'm leaving her forever. I wished then I had taken her out of the box. At that time, in order to get education, my parents and I needed to leave Iran, where we have left since we first left Afghanistan when I was three years old. And finally, I could go to refugee school in Pakistan for the first time. The first day I joined a refugee school in Pakistan was a very exciting and happy day for me. There were 40 students packed into one bare classroom with a window and a board. The blackboard and chalk surprised me, and I found it magical. I enjoyed writing on the board and listening to the sound the chalk made. Every day, I looked forward to going to school. However, after we moved back to Afghanistan four years later, the school there was completely different. There were shelves upstanding, and everything was broken. We started our first few weeks of the school on the rough ground, in the open, warm in the summer term and very cold in the winter term. We didn't have NFT teachers, and only a few of us got books. The rest borrowed and copied. I stayed awake the whole night and copied every single word which came, every single word from each precious book that came on my way. For the first year, my father walked with my sister and me to our school at 6:00 in the morning and walked us back home at 12:00 in the afternoon because of fears about our security. Every bad thing was possible to happen, and especially with students who were girls. After a few months, we got tense, which was a big improvement. Although sitting on the ground for such long periods caused infection and pain in my legs, sometimes during the winter and my exam time, I could not use my pens because they did not work in such a cold weather. Nevertheless, I still felt I was getting somewhere. Even if the pace seemed frustrating and slow at times, despite all of the problems, I still loved going to school and studying. I've always appreciated and thanked my teachers who have taught me. Now, imagine if you wanted to do something, something really important and good, but someone who does not know anything, who is illiterate, harass you or scare you to try to stop you from doing this valuable thing. What would you do? In Afghanistan, some Afghan men have this mindset that women do not need an education. They think that a woman's job is to stay at home and to take care of family, and so a woman should not be exposed to the world outside of her house. Even though my family has always been supportive of my education, I have still faced many challenges for living in a society that does not support women's education. However, I've never feared confronting those challenges despite facing risks to my life. I followed my dream to educate myself and to raise awareness of education to families who were not allowing dear daughters to go to school. I believe in change, and that good change can happen. I've not feared trying to make even a little change, and that could, a little difference in standing up against such bad views in my community. I've started from myself. I've not, I have not feared getting hurt in order to go to school, even though it could have cost my life. When a girl goes to school, she could be followed, harassed, and threatened by close-minded men in Afghanistan. Once I'm on my way to school, a man threatened me with a cricket bat to discourage me from going to school. I tried talking to him in order to explain my purpose for going to school, which is to get an education for a better future. He was not willing to listen. He threatened me, saying, "I will hit you." Even though I was really nervous, I felt confident. I told him, "If you're brave enough, then hit me." He stared at me and left me alone. I'm only one example of many other Afghan girls who are passionate about their education. In another situation, many girls and I almost died for going to school because someone had left a bomb attached to a motorbike next to our school. There are only two examples that show to reach your dreams as a girl. These are, I mean. You might have to fight for it, but there are so many others that are so worse off. My main concern every day, all the time, is about my family who are in Afghanistan. Every time an explosion happens, it shakes me in the US, and I start panicking, and I will not become calm until I hear from them that they are fine. We are all so lucky to be here now in peace and quiet with so much we can do every day without any fear. Even though I did not have the perfect or even a nice childhood or a great life, still I consider myself lucky because it could have been worse, as it is for so many other Afghan girls. And I'm so grateful to God for giving me the chance to live in this world. Now, appreciate the life you have and opportunities you have, to thankful, be thankful for your parents and teachers every day, every day thinking you will not have this opportunity that is before you here, now, any other day. I would like to thank all of my teachers, staff, and the generosity of the alum who has helped make my Westover experience possible, and every member of Westover School who are supporting me and helping me. Also, especially in huge thanks to Jo Dexter, my English teacher, for all her hard work, time, and helping me with my college essay and today's speech. I'm sure I would have not been able to express myself as well without her help. I'm not the only Westover girl who is appreciative for her teachers. Here's a short video of some of my fellow friends describing their teachers. Thank you so much.
Makes a Westover teacher great is that they're just super caring and understanding of you, and they want you to do well. They're really supportive, and they're there for you for anything. You can talk to any of them. They're not just teachers, they're coaches, advisors, and people who just are looking at you and wanting you to do well.
Five words that best describe Westover faculty are: gregarious, invested, dynamic, driven, and passionate.
I think what makes a Westover teacher great is their flexibility. For example, when I need help or extra practice or anything, if you go to them and they don't have any time, they'll make time for you.
I feel comfortable going to them because I know that I'm not burned into them, and I'm not, I'm not wasting their time because they want to give me their time as much as I can. I mean, they want me to succeed in the class, and they're willing to do whatever it takes.
Five words that describe Westover faculty are: thought-provoking, enthusiastic, accessible, dedicated, and intentional.
The school gives us the availability to see them, like conferencing, and also they're great to talk to and they're not really shy or anything. They know a personal background about you, so they know your weaknesses and strengths.
What makes a Westover teacher great is how they're always available, flexible, and they teach you things that you never thought you could learn.
Five words that best describe Westover faculty are: engaged, supportive, helpful, caring, and inspiring.
Westover teachers are actually always inspiring me because they're always so passionate about what they teach and what they do, and they really want you to understand concepts and reach your potential as a student, as a member of the Westover community. And seeing that drive and seeing that passion brought to class and throughout the community every day is something that's really wonderful to see.
Westover teachers are always willing to help. If you ever have a problem, they're always there for you. You can email them in the middle of the night, and they can respond to you automatically unless it's 3:00 in the morning, but...
Five words that best describe Westover teachers would probably be encouraging, understanding, supportive, caring.
Motivational, flexible, understanding.
Caring, creative. Approachable, enthusiastic, very knowledgeable, funny.
Five words that best describe Westover teachers are: intelligent, versatile, innovative, helpful, and always available.
Westover teacher cares about me not only on academic part but also on everyday life. I still remember my first Christmas gift from Westover. It's from my first advisor. It's a package of candies. This really warmed my heart. Westover teachers are more like my friends sometimes.
This is the kind of inspiration that you provide when you invest in Westover. And as I said before, nothing is more important to a school's success than the excellence of its teachers. And if I have one wish for our future, it is to secure an endowed fund to improve the compensation and professional development of the dedicated professionals we have in the classroom. I need to say that we are within inches of doing so, so let me tell you the story. In March of this year, to help close the $1.5 million gap to our $45 million centennial campaign, the trustees launched a challenge, and it was this: they said, "Raise $750,000 in new endowment gifts by the close of the campaign," which is in December of this year, "and establish with that money the Fund for Faculty Support, and we, the trustees and past trustees, will match that fund one to one." Recently, Barry Hogan Landry, class of 62, responded to this challenge by saying that if we meet this goal by June 30th, six months early, that she would make an additional gift of $750,000 to this fund. It's wonderful. It's a very exciting proposition. So what does that mean? This additional gift would raise the total value of the Fund for Faculty Support to $2.25 million for our faculty, which we hope is going to go directly into improvement in compensation and professional development. Effectively, it means that it makes every individual campaign gift that we receive between now and June 30th worth three times its value. Your gift gets matched once by the trustees and once by Barry. Since March, using this as leverage, we've raised $550,000 of that $750,000. So we are this close to matching that challenge. To tell you more about this exciting endowment fund and the annual fund, which is so critical to our day-to-day health, let me introduce Moritansley from our Board of Governors.
When I tell people I'm the Chair of the Annual Fund, I'm often met with, "Well, why would you want that job?" And I'm struck here, listening to Ann, listening to Farah, listening to her classmates, and that's why. That's why this is so important. And there's so much excitement surrounding the Fund for Faculty Support and the trustee challenge that Ann mentioned. The endowment and the annual fund work hand-in-hand to support the Westover community that we care so much about, and there's never a better time than now to make your annual fund gift. Every gift, every donor, every year, makes a difference to the Westover community today and tomorrow. I encourage you to make your gift while you're here this weekend. You can do so in Red Hall. Each year, the annual fund formally recognizes our volunteers who have achieved outstanding success in raising dollars and participation from their classes. The Julia B. Curlin Award is presented to the fundraising volunteers of the reuniting class that has achieved the most exceptional results in support of the annual fund. This year's volunteers are from the class of 1954, Priscilla Cunningham, Mary Meyer Walker, Louisa Jones Palmer, and Debbie Cook Siegel. And we would love to have a photograph with you at the end of the program today. The Adele Irvin Award is presented to the class agent or agents of a non-reuniting class with the best results in participation and increase in total giving to the annual fund. This year's volunteers are from the class of 1995, Molly Barker Gilligan, Stacy Cass, Zania Foster, and Frances Van Hoos Briggs. And the Alumni Board of Governors Award is presented to the class from the most recent 15 years with the highest participation, percent participation to the annual fund. I'm very proud this year to report that this year's volunteer is from the class of 2000, my very own class, Vicki Viera. Thank you to all of you as donors, as reunion chairs and annual fund class agents. And now to present the Athletic Hall of Fame Awards is Tiz Mulligan, Westover's Director of Athletics.
Thank you, Mo. Thank you all for this opportunity to recognize two very important women in the history of Westover athletics. At a time when participation in athletics is vitally important for adolescent girls, it's wonderful that we can take this opportunity to celebrate the athletic accomplishments of our graduates. To put things in perspective, in the last 15 years, over 50 Westover graduates have competed at the collegiate level, and currently, 20 women are participating in nine different sports around the nation. They are truly student athletes as they represent schools such as Middlebury, Bates, Lehigh, Trinity, Franklin Marshall, Havuford, and Tufts. In the past six years, eight Westover graduates have served as captains of their collegiate teams, including two who served both in their junior and senior years, and one who has been named Phi Beta Kappa. In rowing alone, we could fill two alumni boats of eight with coxswains, even though Westover had for its very first time this year its autonomous program. And as a little sidebar, thanks to all of you who voted on Facebook for us to receive our grant from Nielsen Kellerman. That was a huge help to the program. Thank you. This makes me extremely proud as it speaks to Westover's ability to train athletes who are resilient, dedicated, focused, and extremely hard workers, whether in athletic competition or in the classroom or as leaders. 2014 Athletic Hall of Fame inductee Kathy Jamino-Hillian has an extensive athletic history. At a time when Westover is truly dedicating itself to answering the needs of some of its most talented athletes, Kathy stands out as leader. Kathy served as the second head of the Athletic Association in her senior year. She was a three-sport varsity athlete in soccer, basketball, and softball. She was elected captain of all three She was elected captain of all three sports her senior year. She was recognized as All-State in Soccer in 1998, one of only four Westover players to date to earn that recognition. At the 1999 Orchard Ceremony, Kathy received the Ann Cochran Stewart 29 Basketball Award, the Carmen Ekman Soccer Award, and she was recognized with the Senior Athletic Award. She was remembered as an extremely competitive player whose focus and determination infected her entire team. Her clever wit and quick smile put her teammates at ease, encouraging them to always raise the level of their play. Kathy's athletic participation continued as a member of the Springfield College Varsity Soccer Team. She served as a defensive specialist playing the back position. She played in every game her sophomore and junior years, and during that stretch, she helped the team to two winning seasons, amassing a record of 27, 11, and 3. During the 2001-2002 seasons, she was named Women's Weightlifter of the Year. After college, she returned to Westover to assist Carol Santos as an assistant varsity basketball coach for three seasons, and has continued to be an important member of Westover's counseling program, serving our girls daily through our health center. A mother of three children, few men's active in basketball and softball, and continues to run competitively, having competed in the rugged maniac 5K and is looking forward to running a Tough Mudder. Congratulations, Kathy, on your induction today.
I appreciate it. This is an honor.
Caitlin Snyder, class of 2004, has been selected in her first year of eligibility. Caitlin was a standout soccer, basketball, and softball player during her four years at Westover. She was elected a three-sport captain her senior year and was also second head of the Athletic Association. She was recognized at the 2004 Orchard Ceremony with the Ann Cochran Stewart 29 Basketball Award, the Carol Heath Softball Award, and the Senior Athletic Award. Caitlin was always fun-loving and gregarious. Her laughter rang out at every practice and her pure love of sport and competition inspired her teammates. However, when it was game time, no one will forget her game face, a sign that was time to get serious. Softball was where Caitlin shone the most, playing the catcher-infielder position. While attending Westover, Caitlin contributed to the success of the softball team as they earned three Connecticut Independent School Athletic Conference Championships, including one undefeated CISEC season in 2004. In 2002, the team also earned a Western New England Preparatory School Softball Association Co-Championship. She continued her softball career as a four-year member of the Salvia Regina Softball Team, serving as captain in 2008. She was named All-Conference her junior year, and she secured several top-10 records for the program. These include eighth-most at bats, tied for ninth for most runs batted in, and fourth for most put-outs at 634. Caitlin continues to play competitive fast-paced softball while working for the Wisconsin Department of Justice. She also did a year of service with AmeriCorps stationed in inner-city Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Tiz told me last night I didn't have to say anything at all. Thanks. But thank you. I was, this is such an honor. This is awesome. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Izzy O'Magwali, class of 2001, and a member of the Board of Governors. I'm here to present the Distinguished Young Alumni Award. Dr. Jin Lee, the class of 2004, graduated from the University of Pennsylvania, my alma mater, in 2008 with a double major in honors neuroscience and honors biology. Dr. Lee received her PhD in developmental neuropsychology from the University of Oxford in England, where she was a Theron Fellow. Jin is currently a venture, excuse me, Jin is currently a venture capital senior associate at Providence Health and Science Services, where she vets healthcare startups. Jin also founded Baby Mind, a startup that helps parents measure and track their baby's brain's development. Previously, Jin co-founded Anacrisis Press, a startup that helps young adults self-publish. Please join her at 2:30 in the common room to hear more about her entrepreneurship journey. I am pleased to present the 2014 Distinguished Young Alumni Award to Dr. Jin Lee.
Thank you. I didn't know this was going to happen until they emailed me. So, thank you. My education at Westover was truly uplifting. It definitely helped me to be where I am today. Because of my experience here, it basically constantly challenged me to think, to do, to be, which is our motto. So, to Westover, thank you.
Morning. My name is Joni Gerster, excuse me, class of 72, and, oh wait a minute, sorry. They only work if you wear them. It is my pleasure to introduce Toni Walker Hamner. She's the recipient of the Mariah Randall Allen Volunteer Service Award. Toni is a member of the class of 69. She's from Vero Beach, Florida. She has served in various capacities as a tireless and dedicated Westover alumna. Throughout the years, Toni has been a trustee, a governor, has served as a centennial and admissions volunteer, member of the Hillard Society, reunion chair, class agent. Toni has been a tireless supporter of the inspiring Women's Campaign. Additionally, she has organized and attended countless alumni events and has a long line of relatives who have also been very supportive of Westover over the years. Her volunteer work spans outside the Westover arena as a docent and an advisor to the Vero Beach Museum of Art, among many other countless activities. Toni is absolutely one of the best ambassadors Westover could ever have. And so, thank you so much, Toni, and congratulations.
Okay, well, I guess I'm not supposed to tell you all of this, but I do want to say that, and I know many of you had this dinner table conversation as children, don't wait to be asked, volunteer. So, I grew up with that mantra. And then, as I got older, I did things like I volunteered to do Head Start at Westover because we did it with the Taft guys. I volunteered to be one of the 10 girls who went over for 14 days to Taft for the experiment in coeducational living. Look what that did for Taft. But, as those of us who love clicks, I was handed something early on in my life, and I thought I would read this to you. And it's about volunteers. And it's in bullets, so it won't take long. It says, "Think of volunteering as a serious professional commitment and consider their pledges as important as their own career duties. Volunteers are prompt and reliable in reporting for work. Volunteers keep themselves informed of the specific needs and activities for which they are responsible. Volunteers follow instructions," I don't always do that very well, "for each job and accept supervision." Those of you who know me just laughed. Okay. "Volunteers offer and receive feedback and suggestions to and from the staff, and volunteers let volunteer coordinator know as soon as possible if unable to be there at the assigned time." And it was great information to have because I lived by that and I just love Westover. So I'll always be here, I'll always show up, and I'll always do whatever's asked of me. Thank you so much for this award.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Kawila Worley Campbell, class of 1978. I am the Chair of the Awards Committee for the Board of Governors here at Westover, and it is my distinct honor to present this year's Westover Award to Louisa Jones Palmer, class of 1954. The Westover Award is the highest honor Westover bestows. This award is presented annually to a person whose accomplishments are significant and who in life and spirit has exemplified the Westover motto, "To think, to do, to be." Westover's founder, Ms. Hillard, stated in her mission for the school, "Westover is dedicated to challenging and encouraging young women to think both intellectually and spiritually, to do responsibly and with a sense of commitment to community, and to be with energy, self-reliance, and thoughtfulness." Each year, the citation for this award is crafted particularly with the recipient in mind, and so I would like to read this year's citation award. "The Westover Award 2014, presented by the Board of Governors of the Westover School Alumni Association, to Louisa Jones Palmer, 1954. In recognition of your breakthrough career at Ernst &amp; Young, setting an example of successful leadership for women in business. Your service to the greater community as an elder of the Brick Presbyterian Church and treasurer of its Women's Association, and as a board member and director of the Millbank Memorial Fund, working to improve the lives of others through general health policies. Your dedication as a member of the Westover Alumni Association Board of Governors, including three years as president. Your tireless efforts during your years as a member of the Westover Board of Trustees, including nine years as president. And your professionalism and guidance through our centennial celebration. Under your leadership with astute observation, persuasion, humor, generosity, and strength of character, Westover has continued to grow and blossom into one of the leading schools for girls' education. Your energy and devotion in all you do, leaving a legacy of inspiration within the Westover community and beyond. We honor you for exemplifying the spirit of Westover's motto, cogitare, agere, esse."
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, for the last couple of weeks, I've been kind of concerned that this event might not come off. I mean, if you've been reading the paper, you've seen this happening all over the country. Christine Lagarde at Smith, Condoleezza Rice at Rutgers, Piersi Alley at Brandeis, and just this week, Robert Burgina at Havford. So I just was concerned that there might have been some kind of a protest here, probably not from the students. I wasn't worried about that. More likely the faculty and staff, perhaps a few alums who would say enough, you know. And I'd get a call from Ann Triftis and Ann Paulina saying, "Mm-mm. It's not going to happen." So I do thank you. I asked my husband what he thought I should say today, and he said, "Be brief. Say thank you." So, thinking along those lines, I've thought a lot about how much Westover has meant to me, how important it's been to me, and in my whole life, I would say it ranks number three. Now, you might not think that's a very high ranking, but in fact, I've had a great life. I've had a very good life, a very fortunate life. So number one has to be my family, of course. That's a given. Number two is my professional career as a tax accountant. I loved my job. It was challenging, it was exciting, it was different every day. I was anxious to get to work on Monday morning, every Monday morning, and I don't know how many people have the good fortune to be able to say that. And third was my career here at Westover. When I started in about 1990, I just couldn't give it up. I just couldn't pull myself away. I just kept staying and staying. So I had 22 years to work with and learn from two great people, Jo Mulder and Ann And I had 22 years to watch Westover grow and change and innovate and lead and yet not lose what is the very best from Westover's past. Its traditions, its values, they're all still here. They've come right up to the front with all the new things that have been added, and that's the genius of this school. So I want to say thank you for the opportunity to work here.
These are just some final instructions and thank you all for coming. There are several workshops this afternoon. You'll be hearing some bells dinging and some announcements made. Please do attend the workshops. The students have been working very hard to prepare and they're really excited to share with you what they're doing. And the 50th Reunioners, class of 64, your shuttle, your chariot is awaiting you at the South Street Gate, and that will take you to your luncheon. And everyone else will have lunch in the quad. It's a little breezy, but we have some tables set up under the portico. And if you'd like to take your picnic lunch and carry it inside to Red Hall, that's absolutely fine. We will let you do whatever you like. Thank you so much.